This meeting is called to order. Still, if you'd please read the call.
Notice of Joint Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a special joint meeting with the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation on Tuesday, March 13, 2007, at 5:30 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, federal building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Mayor, we do have a quorum established for 4B. Do we, did you...
We don't need to call it. It's the same call.
It's the same call?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the same thing. All right. This meeting is now called to order, both on behalf of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. Everybody would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas one indivisible.
Please bow your heads. We want to thank and give thanks for the opportunity to join together here to undertake business on behalf of the citizens of the City of Brownsville. We want to ask for the good Lord's guidance and blessings over all the work that we undertake here this evening. In His name we pray.
Amen.
All right. Item A, workshop.
Workshop, Item A, discussion regarding the United Baseball League presentation.
I saw the guys here. Where are they?
They're in the hallway.
Somebody want to let them know that we've started?
Mayor, may I give...
It's the same thing as in the room.
Mayor, while they're on the way in, if I could just give sort of a real brief introduction because I think that this...
You know what, Jim? Just before you get started, I should have done this when Commissioner Longoria, the chairman, announced that the 4B Board. I want to welcome the other members of the 4B Board and for the benefit of our viewing audience, if you guys wouldn't mind, just standing up real quickly, we have the Vice Chair Rafael Bella.[175.31][175.31](APPLAUSE). We have the Secretary Palita G. Rico.[181.12][181.12](APPLAUSE). And we have our Chairman and University of Texas Brownsville, Texas Southmost College Board Trustee Roman Dino Espersa.[189.15][189.15](APPLAUSE). And for the viewing audience, both Commissioners Longoria, who is the Chairman for 4B, and Commissioner Atkinson also serve on 4B, and absent this evening is Commissioner Sisneros, who also serves on 4B. All right, go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Only to say that this is the first time that these two bodies have jointly considered the proposals being made by the United Baseball League with respect to the possibility of trying to build a stadium here and bring a franchise team here. We've had a number of discussions kind of between ourselves, but this is the first time that we've had a joint meeting to consider these issues. Attached to the agenda is a proposed memorandum of understanding and Mr. Wint, both Bradley and his brother are both here to discuss the details of it, but just by way of introduction, it's my understanding that all of the terms and conditions that are set out in the memorandum are negotiable, that the purpose of this really is just to provide a starting point between the city and 4B and the United Baseball League in an effort to just kind of establish some common ground and see whether or not it's possible to go forward. Issues that have come up to date that have been discussed but have been left, in my opinion, rather undecided include the funding. The memorandum suggests that it would be desirable for the city to be able to sell tax-exempt bonds and to somehow provide part or all of the financing through that mechanism, but the Wints indicated to me and Representatives of the United Baseball League that they were prepared to discuss methods of repayment, whether or not commercial development or other things of that sort. So I just didn't want anyone to assume that, at least from my understanding, this memorandum is anything that is at this point carved in stone. It was just an effort to provide a kind of a common ground as a starting point to go forward and see if it's feasible to do this for the community.
That was, when this was brought to the commission several weeks ago, that was one of the questions that was raised and one of the concerns raised by this commission with regards to the type of financing that we were discussing. Our understanding and discussions had been that land donation or participation on behalf of the city and that there would be third-party financing. I think that the MOU speaks to the fact that this doesn't commit either party to anything other than moving forward on a formal discussion to see what is or is not feasible from both standpoints. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's, I think, the intention of all of us here is to just determine if there is a starting point and whether or not it is possible to go forward and make some sort of long-term binding agreement.
Okay. All right. Brad, Mr. Wint, you'd like to step forward. You want to briefly discuss what your groups... Yes, sir. Up to the podium. What it is that you'd like to see happen, what type of a presentation you're bringing to the city and where we can move forward from here?
I've had a couple of... People I've not seen. Thank you, Mayor. In a earlier workshop meeting at the city level, we had presented some potential renderings of other stadiums that we're working on across the country. And in our corporate brochure, we do have some renderings of a stadium that we are proceeding on in Columbia, Missouri. Let me just take two steps back and explain a little about United League Baseball. We are currently a league of six baseball teams. In the '08 season, we are planning to grow to a minimum of eight teams. Hopefully, Brownsville, who joined us for the winter league, will be among those eight teams. And we are centrally owned, which creates a lot of advantages, both in terms of expertise of financing, stadium construction, and also leveraging the expertise on the baseball side. The proposal to the city and then in turn, I think the term of ours is the 4B Board? Want to say the 4B Board? Is one whereby the location has not been identified per se. We've worked with the city on several parcels that are owned by the city. Of course, there has been some suggestion that it might make sense to co-locate with other athletic facilities out there on Mary Monroe. However, there's certainly been no decision on anyone's part in terms of location, but the point being is our contribution is a stadium with 3,500 seats, meets minor league baseball standards, and in turn, the city's, as the mayor pointed out earlier, contribution is the property to cite the stadium on. We are in the process of doing this in two of the municipalities. We think that if we're able to roll up our sleeves here quickly, have a meeting of the minds, we would be able to make the 2008 season. Another consideration, the City of Brownsville did participate in the winter league, which is a player development league. Fielded a team this year. If we are able to move things forward, we'd certainly consider moving the winter link to the new facility and have winter link play there, which would be just outstanding both for tourism and also the local community. Delighted to answer any specific questions in terms of our organizations or visions that we have going forward.
Let me ask you, Mr. Wint. You mentioned that you were doing two projects, Columbia, Missouri?
Yes.
And another one. Which is the other one?
We continue to work with Laredo.
Oh, Laredo.
Laredo, Texas. We are playing in what I would call a first-generation facility. We'll be returning there at Veterans Field, and we continue to meet with both the city and the local university and potentials there.
The project in Columbia, how is that one being? How did you work that one out? Public-private participation?
Yes. We actually played there for three seasons in another league. We still own the franchise at the corporate level in the frontier league. What's on the table right now is signed MOU. We're working on definitive documents right now is exchange for acreage, same sort of thing in terms of we're building the stadium, allowing very substantial access to the public and to other constituents to use the ballpark when we're not using it. Of course, we only play 50 home games, but very similar prototype here, Mr. Mayor.
How's the city funding? I'm sorry, Mayor. How's the city funding its portion of that partnership?
Very similar to the proposal on the table here whereby they are contributing the property. They're working with us on rezoning. Right now, it's zoned parkland. It's going to be a rezoned ballpark, parkland, for lack of a better term.
Any issuance of bonds?
They are considering it. The MOU is actually very similar where they've acknowledged that if it's non-recourse to the city, non-recourse to obviously their general obligation, debt rating...
Real quick, who's considering it? Who's considering it?
The question was City of Columbia, Missouri, where we're in a similar situation. They recognize that their cost of capital is superior to our cost of capital, but no definitive decision has been made and no commitment on either side.
You started to say something before Commissioner Atkinson asked you that question about recourse.
Sorry.
That's very important. Could you please reiterate that or repeat that? I want to make sure that we're all clear about that.
And I think we attempted to pick that up in the MOU, but the question was, was City of Columbia, Missouri exploring on day one, just as here with the City of Brownsville, if any financing were to occur in the public debt markets, it could be taxable or taxable, it would be non-recourse to the city, which means that the city's credit is not on the hook. And what you'll typically see is it'd be akin to a project financing. If you're building a research recovery facility, it's all project financing. The city's debt rating is not put out to the investors, and as a result, investors solely look at the revenues that are being generated from the project per se. So that is one thing we are considering in Columbia, and as appropriate, we'd explore that here also, but you know, just one of many options. We are prepared to privately finance this if the working group at the end of the day feels that's the best way to proceed.
Mr. Wint, so worst-case scenario, things don't work out as planned. Who would then, in that scenario, you know, pick up the tab? If things didn't work out, which I'm sure they will, but what happens?
I'm going to address it from just sort of the basic construct. Assuming we did a prototypical deal and every transaction is somewhat unique, I think the biggest risk the city would have and the 4B Board would have, assuming we got to the point where we built the stadium, if we were to go into bankruptcy receivership or decide not to be in baseball any more time, any longer, a trustee would be appointed. The definitive documents will have the same requirements on the trustee that they have on us in terms of basic requirements, pay utilities, et cetera. If they were to default on those subsequent to us, the stadium would revert back to the city or the 4B Board, and you'd be a burden with the maintenance costs on the stadium.
With the maintenance costs, but what about the debt of the bonds?
Once again, it would be just non-recourse back to the project. At that point, well, once the trustee, we're taking it two levels beyond. Once the trustee determines that it's in his or her interest to proceed with the transaction, the stadium on day one is going to be owned by the City of Brownsville or the 4B Board, depending on how we structure it, and in turn, you have full ownership of it. The lease would just be null and void.
So the city would be, would be obviously repaying the bond?
No. The bonds...
No. If it were to go through bankruptcy, it would be discharged?
It'd be severed.
And that'd be it? The creditors potentially would be the ones, or the... Is that right?
But the bond itself would have to be issued to United Baseball League, not to the City of Brownsville, correct?
Excuse me?
Or to the 4B.
It's, well, go ahead.
No, it would be, and Jim, City Attorney, was just mentioning, it would be tied to a specific revenue source, and we're taking it one level further. If that revenue source was no longer there, and we all said, "Well, it was a great idea. Let's use, you know, there's been water parks that have been less than 100% successful. Use that." The trustee or the bondholders just say, "Okay, fine. You know, we give up. Here are the keys. The lease is null and void. You know, the trustee no longer has access to the project, and the city is in full control of it."
What about the commercial land? The land in front of that, that y'all want to put in TGIFs and Holiday Inn, all that stuff comes back city-owned also, right?
If, we're saying that, we're, once again, you know, the 5% cataclysmic, 2% cataclysmic situation, if we step out of it, we cannot make it work. The subsequent trustee, he or she cannot make it work. Then depending on if there's defaults on those underlying commercial leases, everything would, you know, eventually we revert back to the city.
Well, but the issuance of the revenue bonds, if it went that route, would be utilized for the building of the stadium, not for any development of the commercial. That would be purely private interests or third party.
Yes.
Am I right?
You are exactly right.
And the only asset that would be pledged to repay those bonds is a revenue from the minor league stadium, be it baseball games. And of course, this is the other thing why 4B is critical to be here. If Mary Monroe project, or the sports park project on Mary Monroe is to be considered as one of the sites, my recollection, and I know Commissioner Longoria's been here as long as I have, was that there was always envisioned a multi-use stadium. Where's it, Alina? Okay.
According to Dr. Zavala.
Okay. Right? When we finally got the project moving forward, that became part of the second phase of the project. But my understanding was that the intent was always to have a multi-use facility that would be utilized, baseball, soccer, football, and then of course, multi-uses such as concerts or community events, whatever would be allowable. But the most important thing, or the most marketable aspect, was that it would be multi-use so that you'd have your 3,500 or more seats for the minor league, but in the fall, for example, in conjunction with partnering up with the school district, if they wanted to host football games there, that would be a possibility. Soccer, which obviously is extremely, they've been extremely successful, and high school baseball, or tournaments, or whatever the case might be. That's my understanding of what the hope is to build here, not just a quote-unquote "minor league stadium."
No, and that's reflected in the MOU, Mr. Mayor. The way we can accomplish that is we are not going to put real grass in the stadium. We're going to use what they call field turf. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Most of the major college programs are playing the football games on field turf, and you know, the cost is baked into our financial projections. That is a cost on our side of the ledger, but what allows us to do in this environment is to literally use the facility year-round. And you'll see that we've done some just very, very preliminary allocation of what I would call venue dates, because each day can be sliced into three pieces, morning, afternoon, and evening, and we certainly work with the 4B Board and the city to allocate those out to the community and to other constituents.
Let me ask a question. So y'all build this stadium, and you want 15 acres in front of it so you can bring in third-party establishments or whatever. You go bankruptcy. You go bankrupt, I'm sorry. And you're saying the city's not going to get those 15 acres back to generate revenue from those third parties to pay for what's left of the stadium?
I don't think I made that statement, but...
That's why I'm asking you to clarify.
No. Sure. You want to try to clarify?
Go ahead.
Just from the legal economics standpoint, I think an analogous example would be when the city sells bonds for PUB. If for some reason, the bonds that are sold are tied to the revenues of the utility system. If for any reason, the PUB Board and the operation of the system fails to meet those bond debt obligations, then the city commission would have to step in and operate the utility system and run that in a way that would generate the revenues necessary to repay the bond. If the city commission failed at doing that, the bondholders would be in the same situation that Mr. Wint's describing, which is they would be left without recourse. If the source for the revenue to repay the bond is not, doesn't function and isn't available...
Which is only the revenue from the ballpark.
So the issue, which is to say that the issues you're describing really aren't part of this agreement, or even really, at this point, to my knowledge, part of our discussion. If there were other commercial development outside of the ballpark, that would not be part of the revenue stream, as I understand it. That would be dedicated to repay the bond. It would be another deal over and above what we're talking about here.
Got a question, Mayor.
Yeah.
Along those lines, Jim, what happens if the project were to fail? How are the city's ratings affected under those, under that scenario where we go out for a bond?
We happen to have one of our foremost bond experts on hand here to answer that question.
Can you give a short answer on that?
Bear with my attire. No, I know it's a...
Yeah, we're...
Spring break, man, don't worry about it. I think what's important to note is we haven't crossed the bridge as to what instrument you'd be attempting to issue. If it's got the City of Brownsville's name on it, whether it's an appropriation financing, whether it's a sales tax financing, if it has the City of Brownsville's name on it, on those bonds, there would be an intrinsic loss associated with the fact that you, as an entity, supported a financing that went into a default. And if in fact, the financing itself had a pledge that is limited in terms of whether the source of pledge to support the debt payments is just the actual lease or other revenue associated with the project, if it defaults and it has the City of Brownsville name, you're not going to get necessarily downgraded, but there could potentially be other recoursees by a bondholder to attempt to affect the city's ability to come to the market. It's happened to me only once in over 1,800 financings that we've done, and it can make our lives a little complicated. The purchaser of the bonds will have to be a sophisticated investor so that he or she knows that the investment that they're about to make in the City of Brownsville, and in fact, for our own, for our own interest, it's important that the investor knows that this kind of financing is going to be a risky investment. And because of that, rates, interest rates on the loan will be a little higher than what you would expect when you do a sales tax financing. I just received the MOU. The MOU itself talks about potentially bond financing. It mentions that it is desired that the financing for the ballpark complex, on page 205, on number five, this is utilization of bond financing. It says, "It is desired that the financing for the ballpark complex may incorporate, in the city's sole discretion, tax-exempt and/or taxable bond financing, supported by one or more of the following revenue sources: ballpark complex lease payments, commercial property lease payments, public-private partnership revenues from the ballpark complex, special taxing districts including chapter 334, designated city sources, allocable sales taxes, and/or state-of-Texas revenue sources." I think that when we get into the details of those seven, if you want to get an investment grade, if you want to get a good credit rating for a financing of this, it's going to require, for practical purposes, a pretty consistent revenue stream that is not speculative for that matter, in terms of what those lease payments may be. So, I mean, the financing is going to be difficult. We've done financings like this. We, and in the end, the investor doesn't want to have a lot of risk. In the end, he wants solid support. But I think what you have in front of you is a memorandum of understanding that is a non-binding contract, to my understanding, Jim. I think what they want to do is give some of us, I guess, an opportunity to explore the avenues and try in good faith, to the extent that we can, to come to a project that may make some sense, not only for them, but also for the city. And I can assure you that if the opportunity arises, we will engage in some very difficult negotiations, and certainly you will be very fully aware, as not only you as a boardman but also the city commission, as to what those risks will be. But they're not easy projects, I can tell you that much.
So right now, it's better for your firm to work with their people to see what kind of negotiations can be done before we move on?
No. We need... Well, if a bond issuance is to take place, then of course, as our council... But we're not even there yet. We're not even close to being there yet. What we need to do, and I would urge the commission to approve the MOU and see where this takes us. If it gets us to the point where Noe and the cities feel that this is a, from the city's perspective, is doable and presented to us in such a form, or they come back and say, "You know what? This is a risk, or these are the pros, these are the cons," then we'll, you know, and I appreciate all the questions that are being asked because I think they're important, but we're not there yet with regards to what type of financing we're going to figure out. It may be that they're able to come up with a type of financing that's going to be very beneficial to them and to us, or it may be a situation where the only way it's going to work is if the city commits to some type of a bond issuance or whatever the case might be.
My concern on this is, and it just, it's because I sit on the 4B Board and as a city commissioner, is that when we have the language, it refers to the city, but in essence, yes, the 4B, we do answer to the city commission, but in essence, you would, this company would be dealing, and the bonds would be dealt through the 4B. Now, mind you, I'll be out of there after this year, but the continuing board that continues on there, they're going to have, they're going to have to continue with negotiations with this company through the bond. And in essence, we will report, or 4B, if you will, will report to the city commission. And, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, actually, just recently, we had Mr. Inohosa give us some very good advice on the status of our finances because we were seeking a bond that has been before the commission already to further the progress in our sports park. And just with his comments and the recommendations that he made, being conservative and responsible, I think he reported to the city commission that 4B can afford to go out for a bond that would take away approximately $600,000 a year out of our budget, and that's what we're moving forward to. So to say that 4B would actually be the entity that the city would be relying upon to go out for a bond, just based on the analysis that Mr. Inohosa did two weeks ago, we can't count on 4B to go out for the bond on this project. I think it would have to be a city bond, the city...
Let me do it this way. Didn't St. Joseph come and ask for permission?
Yes, sir, they did.
Is it, could this in essence be a similar type of a bond issuance?
Again, I would defer to Noe, but I believe that in their case had to do with them being a private school.
Right. But the asset that was pledged to the payback, the issuance of those bonds, which is done through the city, was the, whatever the school committed, whether it was revenue or, I don't know what they committed.
It's not uncommon, Mayor, that you have non-for-profit corporations like St. Joe's that through their pledges that they receive from either current parents or alumni making pledges to St. Joe's, St. Joe's then goes find an investor. St. Joe's goes find, finds a lender, and that lender says to St. Joe's, "Go find us a conduit corporation," like maybe the City of Brownsville's industrial revenue bond or Public Facilities Corporation, whatever. And that corporation goes out and sells bonds, but the repayment for those bonds is very specific. It's basically St. Joe's pledges received by people who are, you know, their hearts are sold into the institution. I mean, we do this, my son happens to be at St. Mark's. I'm in the middle of a financing for St. Mark's as a board trustee there for them.
I hope you're not charging him.
No, I'm going to promote it there. But from our perspective, you know, you got parents that make pledges, and those pledges will count to offset the repayment of those bonds. In this case, all you're doing, if my, if this instrument is correct, is you act in, you're going to try to act in good faith in terms of developing a plan of finance that talks about how much is this project going to cost, and once we, let's say, it's going to cost us $6 million or $7 million, somewhat similar to what we did in Corpus Christi for Nancis County, the project in Ropsdown, Texas, as you go.
The building of the minor league stadium?
The minor league stadium. We were involved in that.
Who owns that one?
That is owned by Nancis County, and it was done through a certificate of obligation, for that matter. It was a $7 million project. The county financed it. When they make representations as to whether we do a taxable financing or a tax exempt, our bond counsel, our bond lawyer, the law firm, Michael Parkinson Horton, will assess and evaluate how the IRS is going to treat the fact that they want to operate the facility. And if you have a private operator, you know, that's got a special treatment by the IRS as to what these bonds are going to be, whether they're tax exempt or taxable. We don't know how much they're willing to pay in terms of a lease, you know, and there's some, we're going to have to make an evaluation assessment as to what other revenue streams outside of what the city may be willing to allocate, whether it's sales tax or whether it's property taxes or general fund appropriations. You're going to have to make that assessment later on. Today is just an MOU. Today is just an MOU. I think down the road, after the MOU is, is pretty signed, is pretty much agreed upon, you get into a letter of intent, I guess, or execute financings. And you're good three to four months away from that, as this MOU reflects it. But right now, we don't have per se a, a dedicated revenue stream to support the repayment of any kind of financing, whether it's their financing or our financing. If they were coming to you and say, "We want to be your partner," I'll give you an example, and we've been in, in other negotiations with, with people that own professional teams. And if I get into a city or a county, the city or the county wants us to go out and evaluate that professional team owner and find out if in fact, this person or this corporation that he represents has the ability to finance the project that he or she is representing publicly, that he or she can do. So, we'll get into, you know, the, the background of the financial ability of that corporation. And I think in this case, while we know that the City of Brownsville is, is a perpetual entity, you expect to be here for another hundred and fifty years, just like you've been here in a hundred and fifty, for the last one hundred and fifty. And when people come to you and ask you for, for considerations of financing a project, you know, it is your duty to rely on, on some of us to come in and make an evaluation of that, of that proposal. And all we have right now is an MOU. And I think from this point forward, we can, you know, help you make an assessment of their projections in regards to the, to the success of this project.
All right.
But as long as it's non-binding, you're okay.
The investors indicated that, that they would be interested in private investment, just, and I know that, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mr. Inohosa, but knowing, knowing, I mean, if anybody knows the financial status of the city, other than Mr. Gonzalez, you're, you're one of the individuals who, who's most familiar with that. And I know you had an opportunity to study BCIC, but do you have an idea of where things are going at this point? I won't, not that we would hold you to it, but, I mean, we have the option of private financing versus, versus going out for bonds. I mean, what, what are your initial thoughts on that scenario?
Well, I think fundamentally speaking, you, you have to determine once and for all whether you want to, and the way I understood the corporation, based on its action at the last meeting, was that you want to proceed in, in doing the phase out of the original project, right? So, we, we made a commitment, I think the corporation and the city commission made a commitment to proceed with going out and building out the second phase of the project that was, you know, resolved to be constructed years back. So, you're basically in the conclusion stages of that second phase. And for that, we're going to borrow about seven million dollars. Now, as the city continues to grow and its sales tax revenues continue to grow, you may have an ability to do more of that project or more into something like what is being proposed to you today, where it may include you having to dedicate or allocate sales taxes for this specific project. Maybe not all of it, but maybe portions of it, coupled with something that the city commission in his general fund or debt service fund may be, may be willing to do. It's, it's a policy question as to whether that's something the city wants to get in the business of, and, and for that matter, your corporation. In the end, if, if bonds are issued, it is a City of Brownsville issue. It is a bond issue. If in fact, the city, if, if in fact, the bond issue is going to be contemplated. We don't know that. What we've heard, or what I sort of heard in pieces, is that there could be a potential for a public-private partnership, where maybe on the private side, the league itself may put some money down, like they did when they did the financing at the Dodge Arena in Idago. The City of Idago financed a, a limited amount of the project and the league itself came in and financed a big portion of it. In Loretto, Texas, where we serve as financial advisor, the arena financing was done exclusively through a sales tax levy. We created a sports venue and the sports venue went ahead and financed the arena. The arena, the owner of the hockey team did not put a dime to build the facility. And, and, and that was, but again, it was a multi-purpose facility and that's what it's, that is what it's sold as. Loretto Entertainment Center hosts a variety of projects. They do boxing matches, they do all kinds of things. And he happens to have a big tenant, meaning the Loretto hockey team. Here, I think what I heard was that you want to sort of do the same thing, have a, a major tenant in, in this minor league team maybe, with multiple uses at the facility. But that's, that's something you have to explore, that's something you have to, to really talk to them about and see if in fact, that's where they want to be at. But in the meantime, you got, you got something that you've pretty much made a decision on, that is to go and finish out the project you committed to three, two or three years back, or maybe more. Time flies, I guess, when you're having fun. And, and, and then you complete this project and then if in fact, you want to get into this other project, then we'll see what those resources are.
Part of the, this new bond issuance that we discussed at the recent meeting included a, I think, three or three point two five for a stadium, a baseball field. I'm trying to remember, what was that, Delina?
Probably a softball field.
Exactly what the monies were going to be used for, there was different...
Well, I, I remember there being something that said three million or three point two, what was that for?
That, I mean, I showed us a breakdown of what each individual complex area would cost.
Which, which complex was associated with the three point two five?
Oh, it was softball field.
Probably softball field. Because of the baseball alone, just that stadium would cost that much.
Right, that's, that's what, I thought that's what it said, but I, I don't, I don't remember. I thought it said baseball. And that's why, that's why this is a, of issue, so to speak, because we're contemplating building one anyway, not to the degree that they're, they're going to require. But if we're already considering that, that would obviously potentially minimize or, or decrease the amount of that bond issuance if we get everything else worked out. If not, we already know that there's some funds available there because we're considering building something for this.
That needs to be clarified, Mayor, because we just went out for, we just authorized bids for the completion of the softball complex and, and it considered...
Well, it was six million. I'm not saying that, that the softball wasn't included in my...
It wasn't specified for it to be softball, that was just first presentation, potential.
I know, consistent with our master plan though, and our master plan doesn't call for the stadium.
Well, see now, hold on, hold on a second, Mr. Inohosa, somebody told me that. And, and I'm curious when the championship stadium, not minor league, but the championship stadium, got taken out of the master plan?
It was taken out because we, we had the choice, we had the option of going out for twelve to sixteen million dollars in bond. But we were not going to play, we, as a, as a 4B decided that we were not going to place future boards, we were not going to commit future boards' money. So, we opted for the safe route. We opted for seven, according, according to our bond counsel, seven million dollars was adequate enough money to build, to some extent, the majority of the projects that we wanted to get done, excluding the championship field. We can build the championship field on there, we just have to go out for twelve, for twelve million dollars in bond. But we could have done that. We could have easily done that and the votes were there to do it.
Okay, well then, well first of all...
But I'm not going to commit his money or their money.
Well, first of all, you are committing. You're committing seven million dollars.
I'm committing seven million dollars.
So, you can't say, you can't say that you're not committing.
To where, to where they can work with the money that's being generated presently, right now in the city.
So, then let's be clear, what is the six million, what was the six million, or the six hundred thousand supposed to cover? What's that supposed to pay for?
The six million was to cut, the six hundred thousand per year...
Six hundred thousand, which is about seven million.
That's our payment per year.
I understand that, what's that supposed to build?
That was to cover phase B.
Which is what?
Of, of our master plan, which would, which would, I mean, Delina, you...
At this point in time, it's not determined, it's just an additional inclusion. And at this point in time, they provided an option at the last meeting.
But you can be more specific than that. I mean, we know, we know roughly what it is. I mean, it's the softball complex, it does not include the, the pony league fields, it does not include the little league fields. It includes maybe the bike complex.
Gymnasium.
I don't know if it includes the gymnasium.
Maybe, maybe it's easier to say what wouldn't be included, because we, we're, we're a total completion. If, after this six million dollars, the things that would be missing, based on that conversation last time, was going to be the, the little league baseball complex, correct? And the pony league?
That's the recommendation.
Those are the two things that would be missing after this six million dollars. So, included then would be a softball.
That's what I'm saying. So, so there was a, 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 a baseball stadium or complex as part of this seven million dollar bond issuance?
But the design did not include the stadium. It was, it was five different fields. When we say baseball complex, we mean the five different fields that surround a diamond in a section of the park.
Similar to Morningside Park, but a bigger scale.
Did you bring anything, Delina?
The picture.
Anything?
I can bring that.
Go get it.
What occurred at the meeting is that...
Justin?
A recommendation was made by...
The picture?
The team, the agent TV team, of what those funds could be used for, and that's what the board is talking about. They made a recommendation of what it could be used for. A final decision has not been made on exactly, they made, they provided an option at the last meeting. And this is the option that the board is discussing. But yes, Mayor, to answer your earlier question, as far as I am aware of also...
To answer your earlier question, as far as I'm aware of, at least the last, the meetings that were held, both by BCIC board and the city commission, still included in the master plan is that multi-use type of stadium. Yes, sir.
And that was supposed to be part of this next...
That could have been, that's one of the options that could have been used under the, or that can be used under this six million dollars.
Okay, that's...
And what the board is discussing is an option that was presented at the last BCIC board's special meeting. It was an option that was presented by the architectural engineering team of how to best utilize that extra six million that is coming in. And so, they recommended the softball fields, the admin building...
The, the reason that you hear the softball fields and the soccer fields as completion is because that is where we were told that the most usage would come from.
But that thought, that's what's being part of phase one right now.
One, one A and one B, that's correct.
The white parts aren't going to be funded.
No, one B would not include the softball.
The white part is what's being considered, or is, the white part is not going, is going to be missing from the second issuance?
No, from the first.
From the first, from where we are right now.
From the second issuance, you're correct. What, what occurred at the last meeting is the team came back and said, "With the six million, these are the additional items that you can do," which is exactly what the board is speaking to. The softball field, the admin building, the maintenance building, all of the different basketball courts, the BMX course, the skate park. All of these other items are, and in completing also the parking area.
Okay. All right.
So, this is the...
The stuff that's in white is what is not available right now. If we were to build everything with the, the seven million that we're, that we're getting ready to borrow, the thing that would not be built are, is the two projects in white?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And if memory serves...
That's an eleven, eleven million dollar gap.
Those two, those two things are supposed to cost eleven million?
From the last minute, that's what they said at the last meeting.
No, I think the difference is five million. Because it was a total of twelve million. We bought seven, so we need five million.
Twelve minus the seven. So, that five should build those two, those two facilities. The larger one is a baseball, right? That was supposed to include a multi-use field, right? Okay, because we've been talking about this for four years, Delina, right? Okay. And then the smaller one is a softball. Or is that the little league?
These are the youth.
That's the youth, little league, okay, that's the youth, okay. All right, all right.
What happened there was that we went out for twelve million, we were going to tie up money and leave the, the next board...
It wouldn't allow 4B any other money for, for the foreseeable future. For anything else.
Well, without changing Mr. Inohosa's comfort level as well.
Right, and, and, and I, I think that makes all the sense. Now, what, what's important in making this, and remember, guys, all we're doing today is we're, we're opening formal discussions. But as I understand it, what, what the, the league would like to do is, in essence, build that multi-use stadium to a much larger extent and flip it over so that the, the front of the stadium itself is in the front, instead of the, well, those are considered what type of fields in?
Which ones?
The ones that are going to get built.
Softball fields.
Softball and soccer.
Those are soft, that's going to be the, the...
That's what you would call the pony league.
The five stadium right there, that's softball and pony league?
No, that's just softball.
Men and women.
The big, the big one in the white.
Yeah, there could be women here and it could also be women here, so, yes, you're right.
But one of the white gaps is pony.
The big white gap is the pony.
Well, but, okay, okay, well, if, with a, well, I would think that that might be served by a multi-use if you've got movable outfield. Because that's the whole key, that's the whole issue with regards to division in baseball, the length of the outfield, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, the only, and, and I know what, what the league would like to have is that if we can get this done, they want the stadium to be in the front versus the, those softball fields being in the front. And that's why it's critical that if this is going to get done, right now, while the infrastructure's going in, that that be taken into consideration. I don't think that that's going to create a big problem, in essence, flipping it over, especially since right now, we don't have anything that's going to be built right there anyway.
Well, I'm not sure that infrastructure's an issue, because infrastructure is, is there.
Well, but I mean, you're talking about building a different type, yeah, you're talking about building a different type of stadium.
But the issue maybe is actual space. When you're looking at baseball fields, baseball fields are much larger than softball fields.
Now, the grading that has already been done on there has been specific to this plan.
Well...
The elevations, the elevations that are...
Yeah, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Well, it is going to be a problem if it's coming out of our pocket to rearrange it and do it.
We're not even there yet, Commissioner.
But, Ed, that's where we're headed, you know? I'm, I'm speaking to you because we're on a timeline. I'm speaking to you as 4B. 4B, we're on a timeline.
But that's just the whole point. If this is an area that's a, a beneficial area for the project, and obviously, we're already developing a sports park with all of these fields, to me, this makes all the sense in the world. It would make, it would be better, right now, before we've gone too far ahead, that if we can get this done, that we don't spend too much money. Matter of fact, if we get this done, maybe we'll be able to free up some of that other money to, to do some of these other projects without having to borrow any additional funds and get some of these things, other things that right now aren't on the, aren't on the, aren't on the drawing board. So, it's...
The, the, the project related to the memorandum of understanding is a project that would take up twenty-five to thirty-five acres.
Well, that includes, that includes a commercial aspect, and, you know, and that, again, that, I don't know if that's doable.
That, that white portion, if you look at, and I can't see it, the white section...
Right, 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 up in front, twenty fifteen.
The white, the white section, actually, if you do both of them, is approximately thirty acres, Delina?
Twenty-five.
I can't see it.
Both of them together is twenty-five acres.
Which, which, both of them?
Both of the white parts.
Sorry, if you take the white, the two white sections and just kind of square it off, that is totally green. I mean, that is going to be undeveloped, I mean, that's, and that is approximately, that, yes, thanks, Delina, that whole rectangular section there is approximately thirty acres. It's, it's not being affected and the infrastructure has, has...
My, my point is, this, this discussion, which is important, but that's the discussion that needs to take place between the league and our, and our architects and our engineers that are doing the project to figure out what can or can't be done. Number one. Then two, how or how not to finance it. Once they figure out those questions, then it's going to come back to 4B and to the city to see whether or not, or we think it's a good deal or not, whether or not we can afford it, whether or not we want to do it. But right now, and I, these are all excellent questions, I'm just saying, we're, we're ahead, we, we haven't gotten there yet.
Right. But in the meantime, you expect us to move forward with what, what...
Well, I would, I would, you know, I would keep you, I would ask you to bear this in mind so that, you know, this project's been going at not the fastest rate possible, so if it's, if it's... Hold on a second, Commissioner. If it, if it's, if it's delayed another thirty days so that we can figure out how we can put a minor league stadium that's going to have multi-use facilities to serve multi-use sports, I think that's something that's important and should be important to the development of the sports park, especially if we can use those funds that right now, we're looking, thinking about using for this, hey, maybe we're not gonna need it, we'll be able to build something else that's right now not on the, on the drawing board.
I'll tell you one thing, I don't have 30 days with the way our construction is going for this park on the 4B. Now, the reason we're going out for seven million dollars in bond is because of decisions that you and I agreed on were being done wrong by those previous boards. And it got held back, it got changed, and a lot of our money has been lost because we had to do restructuring for different, for different sets of land, for different projects, for everything, everything different. Reconstructing, doing all over again. Ambiotech and HNTB have walked out like champs because of our inconsistencies.
Have what?
They've walked out like champs from this because they're a business, they're a business. They have to continue to draw up these plans for us in the different sets of land that we were proposing.
Well, and, and, and I understand where you're coming from, and I don't, and I don't disagree with you, but I think it'd be a huge mistake to say, okay, well, we need to go forward on this over the next month and give up an opportunity to have a state-of-the-art multi-use stadium that perhaps the city's not gonna have to pay for. I think that needs to be considered and.
By us, by us being a 501(c)(3) and then bringing in a proposal for commercial land, for commercial being built in there, is there any, anything that prohibits us from doing Because in essence, this, this land is being purchased through a 501(c)(3). You have both a subdivision, and you're gonna finance it, or you expect to own it?
Hit the mic.
You're gonna have a private operator, and I guess the question's gonna be how the IRS is gonna treat the fact that the private operator is gonna, is going to, um, uh, to be perceived by the IRS as to, as to how they're gonna manage it. I'm expecting that they're gonna manage it for profit, uh, not, not to break even. Um, so it's something that you're gonna have to, we're gonna have to explore. Um, it is a policy issue. It, you know, you, you, you have, the 4B Corporation has asked the commission to issue debt on behalf of the corporation for a very set of specific plans. Uh, the plans are now B and A, can we, can we modify them, uh, to include a, a baseball facility? I think it's more of a policy issue than it is about a financial issue. Cause I think in the end, if in fact, uh, the powers that be decide to include a baseball stadium, uh, and not knowing how much that baseball stadium is, but for 3,500 seats, it doesn't seem to be, uh, it's not on a cost, I don't think, uh, the amount that was spent in the, in the Neres County project, that conceivably you could modify.
How much was that one?
About seven.
And how many seats does that one have?
I would say about 7,000, I think, five.
Oh, really? That's, that's the, uh, single A for the Astro?
It's the one, uh, no, it's, it's not the one that.
Or is it an independent league? It's an independent league team also? Okay.
It's the one on the expressway on 77 as you're driving north, right there on the east side?
Rob's down. Six thou- it's 6,000 seats? Okay.
And is this, is this image that we have in our folders here, is that a 3,500-seat stadium? This one right here?
It says Columbia on it, but that's a, that's a.
No, actually, I was talking about the one on the cover.
That's actually the Edinburgh Stadium.
This one here?
And that's.
Oh, I see, yeah.
How many, it's about, about 104,000?
4,500.
That's 4,500 at Edinburgh.
But it would, it would look similar to that.
Uh, with, with the exception that there's rather, it'd be different design, and those are very extensive skyboxes. We, we do skyboxes at Phase Two.
And we did the financing in Edinburgh, and that was done by the City of Edinburgh through a $3 million CO, and I believe another $3 million scam from the EDC there. Uh, so it was a $6 million project.
Well, I guess, I guess the point being is that we don't have a lot of time, and if we're gonna get this done, then we need to find out whether or not it's viable, and we need to get everybody on, on board and moving quickly on it. And if it works, fine. If it doesn't, then it doesn't. But I, I think it's in the best interest of everybody to figure out what we can and can't do. Okay? Any other questions with regards to the workshop?
I'm just gonna ask something real quick. I wrote down some questions. United League, will we all ever another name, or you've always been United League?
We've always been the United League, yes.
Always been United League, and, um, excuse me, a brand new company? And you're in seven baseball, you have seven stadiums?
We, we control, uh, seven teams in seven venues, yes.
Okay, have you, as, as the United League, you ever filed bankruptcy?
No, we haven't.
And, um, how, the profit, I asked this in, in the 4B meeting, and I still haven't gotten the information. I'd like to see a breakdown of what your seven stadiums or what you're affiliated with, the profit margins, or how profitable it's been in the last, how long you been, seven years, eight years in existence?
This will be our second season.
Second season? Well, I'd like to see the profits from last year. I'd like to see what kind of money it generated.
Certainly delighted to work with your financial advisor on that topic, or as appropriate in a workshop setting.
Great. Because before we move on, I like to, is it profitable? Could I ask the question to one of them? I forgot. And I asked him, do you, do you, uh, how much money y'all make? He goes, well, sometimes we even out, sometimes we don't. Well, to me, if we're gonna put something out for the citizens of Brownsville, I like to invest in something that's gonna be profitable.
Commissioner, we haven't, we haven't decided if we're gonna do it or not. That's why, that's why the steps are to.
I'm just asking the questions before we make a decision on doing a MOU.
Of course.
Cause why do an MOU if, if, I've never even seen the financial, the profits.
Well, we'll, let me ask it this way. Let me ask it this way. Are you all interested in doing this because you're gonna lose money?
Well, of course not.
Well, I mean, they're, they're, no, it's the same, it's the same question. It's the same question, Commissioner. You, you, I don't, I don't have a problem, I think it's, it's important that you, we look at the financials. But they're not gonna sit here and tell you we're in this to lose money. I mean.
I'm sure Taylor, I'm sure Taylor Kraft wasn't, I'm sure Titan Tire wasn't, but we just need to ask those questions. That's all I'm saying. We need to ask those questions and get that information. And you agree, right?
Let me make one distinction, it came up earlier. Um, the 501, the, the 4B Corporation is a 501(c)(3) corporation. It probably will not be making a profit. What their business does or doesn't do will be proprietary and, as, uh, Mr. Winke indicated, maybe not appro- they may not be willing to discuss that just as a matter of public record, I don't know. But the, um, the fact that the 501(c)(3) corporation is a nonprofit corporation, our interest would be just in leasing the property to them, and that would be the source of our revenue. Most of the other, you know, proprietary information and profit margins and so forth would be their personal information, which might go into our analysis, but I can understand if they didn't wanna present that just on the, on the airways.
All right. If I could just say one thing to sort of reinforce, uh, something I said the last time I was here, is, uh, you know, United League Baseball is coming into its second year. It is by definition a startup business. And, uh, the vast majority of pro-formers you see for startup businesses lose money, you know, year one, year two, year three, year, sometimes year four, sometimes year five. I believe our pro-form, if I'm not mistaken, uh, hopes that we break even this year and start turning a cash flow in, uh, year three. But, you know, that may be tweaked a little bit. We may lose money in, in year three. But I think it's unrealistic to think that it's, uh, every startup business is going to ma- uh, generate positive cash flow in year one or year two. So that's, I do wanna make that point.
I've seen like the White Wings, they've been here for a long time. I don't, I've been to some of their games.
Commissioner, uh, by definition, that had been dark for three years if I'm not mistaken, so last year was its first year, that in my eyes, that is a startup.
Well, I'm not talking about your league, I'm talking about other leagues. The, the Roadrunners, Edinburgh Roadrunners. You know? Well, I mean, I'd like to see, and I've asked this before to y'all. Give me financial stuff. Give me some, some, some numbers that y'all did last year. I, I'd like to see that. I think we have a right to see it.
Well, let me, let me also add another, another thing that we don't have, we've been, Skip Keller, for example, talks, uh, in our meetings about the revenue that comes in from the tournaments and things like that, that get generated in hotels, et cetera, et cetera. And so I don't, I don't think we've ever been given that as well. So this is just an observation. On top of that, clearly, um, you know, we need to have, what, what has happened in other communities that's generated, what, what kind of tournaments, how many tournaments? And what's that number? What can be expected in terms of revenues to the city? Not just from the park itself and, and what you're talking about, but I'm talking about peripheral hotel, et cetera.
Well, and, and I mean, I'm sure that they, you know, that'll all be part and parcel of the discussion. Okay? Are there any other questions? All right. Item one.
Item one, consideration and action regarding the United Baseball League presentation.
And this is for the, with regard to the MOU.
About this, for action 4B? All those in favor, answer by saying aye.
Well, what's, what's the motion?
If you would like to enter into consideration, with a memorandum of understanding with the United Baseball League at this time.
I would still move.
Is there a second?
Uh, I mean, is it, or is it the city that's entering into the MOU, or both of us entering